Officer. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of July 26, 2023. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available online or at the Planning Department, Room 213. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. If you parked in the parking lot across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are needed. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, commissioners and the staff, cell phones may not be used in the chamber during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. The Planning Commission action today is final on the following items. 1.5 Special Permit 16026A. 1.6 Special Permit 23014A. 1.7 Special Permit 23028. And 1.8 Special Permit 23038, or 23030. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or the County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held July 12, 2023.
So moved, Campbell.
Second, Joy.
Shelley?
Ball.
Say.
Campbell?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Abstain.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Approved.
The next item of business is the Consent Agenda. Items on the Consent Agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from a commission member or if someone is wishing to speak. I will ask Shelley to read all the Consent Agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the Consent Agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the Consent Agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the Consent Agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Shelley, will you please call the items on the Consent Agenda?
I want to first note that Commissioner Joy has declared a conflict of interest on Item 1.7 Special Permit 23028 and therefore will recuse herself from voting on the Consent Agenda. First item on the Consent Agenda is Item 1.1 City Comprehensive Plan Conformance 23010. To review as to conformance with the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster Comprehensive Plan, a proposed amendment to the Antelope Valley redevelopment plan to add the 23rd Street Net Zero Live Work Redevelopment Project to add a mixed-use building with residential and commercial on property generally located at 23rd and R Street. Item 1.2 City Comprehensive Plan Conformance 23011. To review as to conformance with the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, a proposed amendment to the West Haymarket Redevelopment Project and the Lincoln Center Redevelopment Plan in the area generally bounded by the Burlington Northern, Santa Fei, and Union Pacific Rail Lines on the west, by approximately North 7th Street on the east, the south interior roadway of Haymarket Park, and B Rider Pedestrian Bridge on the north and M Street on the south along its eastern edge. Item 1.3 City Comprehensive Plan Conformance 23012. To review as to conformance with the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, a proposed amendment to the South Haymarket Redevelopment Project and the Lincoln Center Redevelopment Plan to adjust the project area and men multiple phases generally located between 4th Street and the westernmost boundary of the future South Haymarket Park up to the Pinnacle Arena Drive on the west, the east side of 9th Street on the east, the south side of J Street to the south, and the north side of N Street to the north, located in Section 261006, Lincoln Lancaster County, Nebraska. I want to please note that this item is being recommended for approval as amended by staff letter dated July 25, 2023, which was provided to Planning Commission members. Next item, 1.4 Text Amendment 23009. Amending the Lincoln Municipal Code, Chapter 26.13.010, Lot Consolidation, to remove the text amount easement releases about easement releases and existing easements, Chapter Information required on preliminary plat by deleting paragraph for Planning Commission Chairman's signature. Chapter 3.35 Design Standards for Community Unit Plans, by deleting these design standards, which are contained in the CUP Site Plan Requirements under Zoning Ordinance 27.65.070, and by proposed amendment to 25.65.080, to add the maximum density regulations 27.02.020 and 27.02.040, by adding definitions for alcohol crafting and commercial kitchen. Chapter 27.06.140, to add alcohol crafting and small-scale commercial kitchen to the use group table. Chapter 27.69.020, to amend definition for on-premises sign. Chapter 27.69.340, to amend the sign regulations for planned unit developments for sub-area districts. Chapter 27.64, to delete items under use permit which are not needed to be shown and add items that do. Chapter 27.06.110, Chapter 27.62.080, and Chapter 27.63.70, to change early childhood care facilities from conditional to permitted in O1, O2, O3, and RT, and from special permit to permitted in the H4 and repealing sections 26.13.010, 26.15.015, 27.02.020, 27.02.040, 27.06.110, 27.06.40, 27.62.080, 27.63.070, 27.65.080, 27.64.010, 27.69.020, and 27.69.340, as hitherto existing, and repealing Chapter 3.35 of the City of Lincoln Design Standards as hitherto existing. Next item, 1.5 Special Permit 16026A, to allow for a CUP Community Unit Plan for 14 dwelling units on property generally located at South 68th Street and Princeton Road. This is final action. Item 1.6 Special Permit 23014A, to allow for a CUP Community Unit Plan for 14 dwelling units and associated waivers on property generally located at 3995 North 26th, North 26th Street and North 26th Street and Old Dairy Road. This is also final action. Item 1.7 Special Permit 23028, to exceed the maximum height limit of existing zoning for a concrete plant on property generally located at 7301 North 70th Street. This is final action. Item 1.8 Special Permit 23030, to allow for the expansion reconstruction of a nonconforming use on property legally described as Lot 150IT located in the southeast section of Section 22106, Lincoln Lancaster County, Nebraska, generally located at 200 West P Street. This is final action. Item 1.9 Street and Alley Vacation 23004, to vacate the east-west alley between O and P Street, between North Antelope Valley Parkway and North 20th Street, adjacent to property generally located between O and P Streets and between North Antelope Valley Parkway and North 20th Street. Are there any expedite communications to be disclosed on these items?
The text amendment was reviewed during the mayor's roundtable.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
I was at that same meeting.
Are there any expedite communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of these sites to be disclosed?
I see none.
If there is anyone here wishing to speak on these Consent Agenda items, please stand and state that item.
Yes.
I'd like to speak on 1.5.
1.5. So Special Permit 16026A. Okay.
Should I approach?
In just a second.
I'd also like to speak on 1.5.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Comprehensive Plan Conformance 23010. Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on any of the items on consent? Okay. We will pull 1.1 and 1.5 and move those to public hearing. Other than that, I will entertain a motion for those items still remaining on consent.
I would move to approve the Consent Agenda, including the staff memo on Comprehensive Plan Conformance 23012 or 1.3.
Second, Core.
Okay. Shelley?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Approved, 8 to 0.
I will now ask Shelley to call the requests for deferral.
We have received written communication from the applicant requesting a deferral until the next Planning Commission hearing of Item 4.1 Street and Alley Vacation 23005, to vacate a portion of the South 1st Street right-of-way between Pioneer's Boulevard and Old Cheney Road, adjacent to property generally located at South 1st Street and Pioneer's Boulevard. This will delay public hearing action to the August 9, 2023 Planning Commission hearing.
Okay. There's been a request for deferral. May I have a motion?
So moved, Campbell.
Madam Chair, could I be heard on that?
Not at this moment. In just a second, you can.
Second, Joy.
Shelley?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Approved, 8 to 0.
If there is anyone here that wishes to speak today on this item, which has been deferred, you may do so today, keeping in mind that that will become part of the record and that will be your opportunity to speak. So we will be happy to receive testimony on that item today, or you are welcome to wait until the actual public hearing, which will be in two weeks.
My request would be to delay it for another two weeks because there are some people who are interested in that hearing who have other activities to attend to on that day.
Because it's a request from the applicant that we heard the motion on.
That's why I wanted to.
I think the applicant has to make requests for deferral.
Right. I think that requests for deferral typically come from the applicant. Can you help us with that, Abby?
Abby Luttrell, Law Department, 555 South 10th Street. So the motion before you right now is a motion that's been made by the commission on behalf or at the request of the applicant. I think one of you could make a motion if you chose to, to delay it further, but that's not the motion before you now. And testifiers don't have authority to make motions.
Abby, I didn't hear that last part of that sentence.
So a witness making public testimony can't make a motion. The motion would have to come from a member of this commission.
It was a request.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah. I will share with the group that we, as commissioners, read every letter that we receive from members of the community, and we give those just as much weight as we do to in-person testimony. So if someone is not available to present live testimony, we would encourage folks to write those letters and share their perspectives with us, and I guarantee you that we all take those letters very seriously.
Tracy, do we also still accept Zoom testimony?
I do not believe we accept Zoom any longer. So. Where are we?
There's a motion on the floor.
So we have a... Didn't we vote on that? Yeah, we voted on that.
So we have no one testifying, we go to public hearing.
Correct. Okay. We will now proceed to public hearings. Prior to staff making a brief presentation, each staff person should state their name, agency, and address. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak, unless additional time is requested and granted. The clerk will use the light system to help aid your timing for your testimony. The lights will appear on the monitors provided. The green light indicates the start time for testimony. Yellow light represents one minute remaining. Red light indicates that your time, your five minutes, has expired, and the clerk will indicate that your time is up. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members and/or included as part of the record, please provide them to the clerk. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing, unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Shelley, please call the first public hearing item.
Yes, it's going to be Item 1.1 that was removed from the Consent Agenda, Comprehensive Plan Conformance 23010, to review as to conformance with the 2015 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, a proposed amendment to the Antelope Valley Redevelopment Plan to add the 23rd Street Net Zero Live Work Redevelopment Project to add a mixed-use building with residential and commercial on property generally located at 23rd and R Streets. Are there any expedite communications to be disclosed on this application?
No.
Are there any expedite communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of this site to be disclosed?
I don't see any.
Good afternoon. Ernie Castillo, Urban Development Department, 555 South 10th, Suite 205. Today, we have in front of you asking for Comp Plan Conformance for an amendment to the Antelope Valley Redevelopment Plan for the 23rd Street Net Zero Redevelopment Project. The project is located on 23rd Street between R and Q. Project R and Q Street. It's a mixed-use development, construction of nine living units and first-floor commercial space that's intended for micro restaurants, restaurants starting off looking for a small space to kind of kickstart their business. As all of you know, this is the first step, or one of the steps, that lead us toward a redevelopment agreement that we're just starting to work with on the developer for the use of tax increment financing. So with that, I will answer any questions. The developer is also here to help answer questions.
Questions for Ernie. Thank you very much. All right. I'm hopping all over here. So do we have testimony from the applicant as well? Fantastic.
If needed, I can plug this in for visual aid if need be. Otherwise, I can answer questions, but as Ernie said, generally, this is...
If you could give us your name and address first, please.
Ben Kuntz, 2539 Rathbone Avenue, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Thank you.
You know, generally, this is a missing-middle, mixed-use, net-zero, Ernie mentioned, so that's referring to net-zero-ready, which is a high degree of sustainability, energy efficiency for building construction. And the ground-floor micro restaurants are targeting new and emerging, primarily food businesses, but open to others as well. And so really trying to be kind of an economic generator for small businesses there. And, you know, we really see this as a project that leverages the Antelope Valley investments by the city, you know, general efforts in this neighborhood by neighborworks and others. And, you know, we're pretty excited about it, so I'm happy to take questions.
Questions for the applicant. Great. Thank you very much. Is there testimony in support of this application? Testimony in support?
Hello. My name's Ken Winston, 13278, Suite 300. Well, I hope that Mr. Kuntz didn't get upset when he heard that I was asking to have it taken off the Consent Agenda, because I think it's a big deal. It's more than just a Consent Agenda item. As far as I know, this is the first net-zero development plan that, it's the first one I've heard of in Lincoln, and it's a really, really important step. And recognize it's fairly small, but hopefully it's something that can be scaled up. And one of the other things that I note in the staff report is that this is consistent with the Climate Action Plan. And I know there's been some questions about whether some of the things, the development proposals that are coming before you, whether they are consistent with the Climate Action Plan, and this is one that is, because it's a net-zero plan to have solar energy, to be highly energy-efficient. Well, I had a conversation with Mr. Kuntz a while back, and I think it's a really exciting, really exciting proposal. And so, but if we're going to meet our climate goals, I mean, climate change is a real thing. And if we're going to meet those goals, we need to start having, encouraging projects like this and making a bigger deal out of them and supporting and making sure that they are facilitated. So thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today.
Great. I appreciate that. Are there any questions? Thank you so much.
You bet.
Additional testimony in support? Is there any neutral testimony or testimony in opposition? Any questions for staff or the applicant?
I would move to close the public hearing.
Second, Joy.
Shelley?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
And I would move to approve Item 1.1, which, got to get back to my... Which is, that would find in compliance this project, 23010.
Second, Joy.
Discussion.
Go ahead.
One, this is probably my first time hearing something get pulled off the Consent Agenda for support, so thank you. It brought a smile to my face because I do agree that, and we've talked about it as commissioners, the climate plan and how we evaluate things and items that come in front of us hasn't really been discussed. And so when seeing the net-zero project, it was great to see, and I think hopefully we can continue to see that, you know, development. So it's definitely a positive thing, so I appreciate you coming up and doing that.
I would also echo Lorenzo's comments in the fact that this is, to my knowledge, the first that's faced us with this situation, and it will be great to see more come forward that aid us in meeting some of the goals that have been set through the Comprehensive Plan.
I agree. I think it's an exciting project. I'm excited to learn more about it as we move forward, and I'm delighted to vote yes in support of this. Shelley?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Approved, 8 to 0.
Okay. We will now move to Item 1.5 Special Permit 16026A, to allow for a CUP Community Unit Plan for 14 dwelling units on property generally located at South 68th Street and Princeton Road. Are there any expedite communications to be disclosed on this application?
I don't see any.
Are there any expedite communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of this site to be disclosed?
No. Tom?
Good afternoon. Tom Chaka, Planning Staff, 555 South 10th Street. This application is to amend a previously approved community unit plan. The original CUP was approved in June of 2016. It's located on South 68th and Princeton Road. This amendment adds approximately 72 acres to the boundary of the CUP. The area added is this portion up here. And with the additional property, it increases the density to 14 dwelling units. The previously approved plan was for seven. So like I said, previously, the boundary did not include this area up here. The previous approved plan included these three lots, this lot, and then previously there were three lots down in this area. So those three lots plus the seven new ones are all up in this north portion of the property. There would be a new street off of 68. This would be the only access to 68. These lots would not have direct access. They would come off of the street. The lots range in size from about three acres to one acre. Each lot would have their individual water well and septic system. A well report was submitted by the applicant and reviewed by Lower Platte South Natural Resource District and Lancaster County Health Department. They both concluded that water quantity should not be an issue. There was, the NRD did note some concerns for nitrate levels, but those could be remedied. There's lots of technology out there to clarify water, and that would be up to each individual property owner. The NRD notes that the location is underlaid by a productive aquifer system in this area. And take any questions?
Questions for Tom?
I have a couple. In the first bullet point on the staff report, I just was a little confused because there was talk about adding the seven lots for a total of 14, but then it referenced 10 new lots.
Yeah.
So I think, is that because we took the three away from kind of the lower section and now we have more up top? Okay.
And I agree. I was reading that again. I could see how that was confusing.
I wanted to make sure I was on the same page.
So when I... So when I say 10 new lots, I mean, there's 10 new lots up in this area. Because like you said, the three that were down here are now up here.
And then, can you tell me a little bit about what this dam restarted thing is talking about? Like?
That's right. Um, not really. I think the engineer consultant is here. He could probably answer that better.
Those were, I think, my two main questions.
Any other questions for Tom?
Right, yeah. Tom, on that, on the, if it's, yeah, it is going north. On the northwest lot on the corner, do they already have access to?
This one?
No, one above it.
That's not part of the CUP.
Okay, all right. And so is that occupied with the house?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions for Tom? Okay, thank you. Testimony from the applicant?
Good afternoon. Mike Eckert with Civil Design Group here today on behalf of Princeton Road LLC, the applicant on this community unit plan. I'm going to put up the same exhibit Tom had. This will hopefully be able to, be able to zoom in a little bit and out at first, and we'll zoom in later, so we get a little better perspective of the scope. It's a big area. So, yeah, so we did this project several years ago. And I believe, Tom, we'd have to double-check. I believe we were approved for nine lots. We were showing seven lots. This lot was previously built, this lot, this lot, this lot was added. And we showed three lots down here, and we had two unassigned units. The developer at that point was just interested in creating this lot. And so, and then we added these acres up here. And so in the CUP is this lot, this lot, this lot, and this lot. So four existing lots, and then 10 new lots here. This parcel's not a part of the CUP, and this parcel down off Princeton Road is not a part of the CUP either. So, so it's the standard clustering and the bonus for the clustering. We're not doing community sewer, so there's no cluster, cluster bonus or bonus for that. And so, we've worked extensively with the county on this, bringing these lots up north here and accessing 68th Street, because they are going to be, well, they have approved funding for widening of 68th. As many of you know, this is a direct route for a lot of people from the north to Norris schools. And so they're going to be getting a shoulder on it. And so what we worked out with them was that we'd be allowed to do five lots, new lots, at this entry point. And then we'd be limited until 68th Street's widened. And then at that time, they will design and plan turn lanes for us. And then this developer will just write a check for his, for the cost of those turn lanes during the widening project. And then Commissioner Cor, your question may have been about, there is a dam here that is not functional today. It's been opened up, so the water just flows through, but. And I've talked with the neighbor to the north. It's partly on her land, partly on this land. When we had planned that, so that's what there's this long squiggly line is, if it was ever put back into commission and we had a big rain, that would be the ponding level of the water. And so we'll establish all our minimum openings on those lots.
I just wasn't sure how you stopped and restarted a dam.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, you just, you just, you just take a backhoe and cut, cut through the middle of it, let the water flow through. So there's some natural springs down here on this end of the property. And so that's what, that's all about. So, so yeah, pretty straightforward community unit plan. We've done the research out here. This is a very good area of water, actually, for the county. There's a center pivot just catty corner from here that's registered to pump water at 600 gallons a minute. So both the NRD, and I think several neighbors out here have had conversations with the NRD about that. So with that, be happy to answer any questions you have.
Is there any timeline on the widening of 68th Street?
So the latest we have is a right-of-way acquisition in 2024, design 2025, construction 2026. It's all subject to some government funding that could be delayed. But that's the best that the county engineer has at this point.
So that is being your agreement with regard to the five lots now, five lots later upon the widening? That's part of a development agreement? Is that correct?
It's a note in the community unit plan.
Okay.
So that note will limit the plating with the planning department. So they'll know to look at that note if we go beyond the five lots, the five new lots.
Great.
Specifically related to this entrance and the 10 lots on it.
So do you know which five lots you'll do first?
Probably the ones closest to the road, just as we egress back.
Sure. Okay. Other questions for Mike? Great, thank you very much. Next, we'll take testimony in support. Is there any testimony in support of this application? Is there any neutral testimony or testimony in opposition? Yeah, come on up.
I can tell I'm new.
No, that's all right. We're all new at some point.
Okay. My name's Betty Mason, and I live at 23130 South 54th Street, Firth. So we are just a quarter mile north of 54th and Olive Creek Road. And we're quite familiar with this area, so thanks for some of the additional information. We received a couple of letters in the mail regarding this. And, and the reason I wanted to come speak today is because safety is my number-one concern on 68th Street. So if you haven't done so already, I would encourage you to drive that mile between Olive Creek Road and Princeton Road on 68th Street. I'm pleased to hear that there's some limitation regarding the building. But even with just the way 68th Street is without this, it's a dangerous road. And we've already seen some fatalities out there, as I'm sure you're quite aware. Adding a concentrated housing development right at this spot is very concerning to me, because it's a rolling hill road on 68th Street, if you've seen that. And there's a hill right prior to that entrance into this housing development, as you would turn left if you were coming from Lincoln into that development. I actually like the development in the fact that Norris is one of the best schools, I think, in Nebraska. I think more people would love to take advantage of that school district. But I would really encourage you all to delay approval until the road is improved, because, you know, we just don't need any more people to die out there. And, and I know my son's going to give some testimony as well, but what the, the incident that I'm really familiar with, a car was going 35 miles an hour and rear-ended a, a car load of kids, and one of them died. So, sorry, I'm getting emotional.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, so water seems to have addressed. However, Hickman has wells there, north of that intersection and southwest of that intersection. And so I don't know what the Hickman development is and if they're going to be drawing more water there, but I would encourage a comprehensive plan to be understood on the water supply. Sounds like there's a lot. We have plenty of water at our house. I know of other places that developments have been approved, don't. So that's, that, I'm glad you've addressed the water. The other last concern I have is the impression that we got from the letters that we've received. So it says, Docks Creek First Edition. So it gives the impression, as you do the math, that we're going to have about one house per 16 acres. But it gives me also the impression that more additions are planned. And so if there is an overall comprehensive plan, I would encourage you all to understand what that is. And, and do we have enough water? And do we have the right safety in mind? So the letters, and, and you spoke to it very nicely, that we don't have a guarantee that the road's going to be improved, and you could be adding probably at least 20, if not more, cars, if there's students in these homes, to that very dangerous situation with the rolling hills. So any questions for me?
Questions? Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Additional testimony in opposition? Come on up.
Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to, before you today. My name is Jacob Mason, and I also live at 23130 South 54th Street in Firth, Nebraska, which is a neighboring property to the one which this special permit concerns. Like many residents of Southern Lancaster County, I consider myself not from Firth or Hickman or Roca or Cortland or Princeton, but of Norris. And as a 2019 graduate of Norris High School, whose close friends and fellow Norris students were involved in a fatal crash in 2017 just north of the intersection of South 68th Street and Princeton Road, nearby where this development seeks to add access to an additional 10 homes, I respectfully urge the Planning Commission to vote against approving special permit SP 16026A. The developer states in a July 18, 2023 letter to the property's neighbors, quote, "We have worked with the county engineer to have turn lanes added at this location when South 68th Street is improved. The county engineer has South 68th Street improvements tentatively scheduled for construction to begin in 2026, but this could be pushed back pending federal aid availability," end quote. The fatal car crash that killed a Norris student in 2017 was impacted in part by a vehicle that slowed down to turn around at almost the very spot that this development seeks to add a drive with access to 68th Street. And as they, as was stated earlier, they were going, you know, under the speed limit, which was, you know, 35 in the school zone, and then it turns into 55 there. These ditches are very steep, and there's no side shoulder right now, which is one of those planned improvements. And while I applaud the work of our county engineer and our public and private partners that have worked to secure funding to widen South 68th Street, a project which will add shoulders, install site improvements, so to mitigate those hills on the road's most dangerous hills, the developer plainly states that the student drivers, buses, and parents will have to wait at least three more years before South 68th Street is improved and made safe for such a development. For the over 700 Norris High School students that drive themselves to school each day, the parents that drive their young children, and for the bus drivers that regularly turn from 68th Street in Princeton and vice versa through that intersection to get over 2,000 school to and from, schoolchildren to and from school each day, this development is too dangerous until South 68th Street has been adequately approved, even if we're only building on five lots before the improvement on those roads. For these reasons, I respectfully urge the Planning Commission to withhold approval of special permit SP 16026A until the county engineer has successfully improved South 68th Street for all Norris patrons. Our Norris community is special, and I urge you to please help us keep it that way today. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Thank you for your testimony.
Appreciate it.
Additional testimony in opposition? Are there staff questions?
Yes. Tom? Can you maybe address, the, one of the testifiers had questions on, like, the first addition and how that leads her to believe that there might be more, you know, additions and, and the density? Can you kind of talk about that a little bit?
So, we use the term first edition, second edition, et cetera, when it's amending a previously approved plan. Instead of giving it a new application number and a new name, we just put an A behind the previous number, and we call it first edition. It doesn't necessarily mean there will be a second or third. In this particular case, they could not add any more density unless they added more acres to the boundary of the CUP or if something changed in the county zoning text to allow more density. On the density question, the previous one, previous CUP, if you do the density calculations, it would be nine lots. However, they were limited to seven lots, because there is a open space requirement of 70% of the total area has to remain as some type of open space. And because three of the lots within the CUP are large lots, I think they're around 10 acres, that kind of used up some of the area that they could have used for additional lots. So even if your density says you can have nine lots, you can't go beyond that threshold of 30%, leaving 70% open space.
So if they wanted more density, they would have to subdivide or split one of those bigger lots? Now they can't add density?
The density now is 14 lots.
They'd have to add more acres.
Right, correct.
So this is as big as it'll get unless they add in more area around it?
Yeah. And on the, I would also note that this application is routed to the county engineering department and the county sheriff. And the county engineering department has guidelines for either a driveway or a street connecting to one of their section line roads. They have to meet a certain dis, site distance requirement. And the engineer did not say it did not meet that requirement. So they, I mean, they approved this location of the street. And sheriff's office had no comment.
So Tom, the way the current CUP is worded, there's four lots that are built out now. And so there's still three lots that have not been built that could be built under the current CUP, right?
No, this one basically makes the previous CUP.
I'm just saying, ignoring, ignoring what we're doing now, if we, if we're looking at what's in place currently, they could still build on three lots without any engage, any action by this body. Is that correct?
Actually not. And I should have mentioned this earlier. They had, previously, an administrative amendment was done to increase the lot size of this lot. They took part of the outlot and made this lot much larger. It's now 12 acres. So when they did that,
Okay.
and to be able to maintain the 70% open space, they had to lose
A lot.
these lots down here.
I see. Okay. All, all of them, all three of them?
Yeah, I believe that's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions for Tom?
Oh, yes, I have one. So when Mr. Eckert said that they're limited to five lots until South 68th Street widens, do those four lots count towards those five? Or just off of the new street that they're putting up north?
Well, so under the approved plan today, which would have been that administrative amendment that got rid of the three lots down there. So the approval plan today just approves these three lots and this lot. So when they limit it, it would be five of these new lots.
So it'd be five in addition to the four that are already there?
Correct.
Okay.
These all have, I think these all have houses on them.
Do they have direct access to 68th Street?
I believe these three do. This one comes off of this access easement here.
Okay. Other questions for Tom? Okay, thank you. Applicant rebuttal?
No, I'm good. I'm good. I was thinking about saying something, but I changed my mind.
Yeah, so as Tom mentioned, the first addition is kind of semantics. It's just when you amend something. If we were to amend it again, to for some reason change the configuration of the lots of the road, that'd be, after this was approved, it'd be second addition and so on and so forth. So, so yeah, and appreciate the testimony and concern. And I know South 68th Street is, is on Pam Bingman's priority list. She just went out aggressively sought and got the funding, which I think is fantastic. Probably wouldn't have happened under the previous county engineer, quite honestly. She's doing the same thing on 148th Street. We have these streets that become connections to some of these outlying cities. And so, and we've taken a lot of this into account. This project for us actually began, this amendment, in 2020, looking at how we would do this. And then the developer wanted to wait a while with COVID and, but we had meetings back clear into last year. back clear into last year with the county engineer to talk about this and the location of it. And with every AG CUP, and now with every even ag preservation plat where we're not putting in a real public road, we just have an access easement, we have to verify if it's a county gravel road, if it's South 68th, if it's 148th Street, that we meet the site distance requirement, which is a distance 550 foot each direction based on the 55 mile an hour speed limit and the time to react and be able to see the vehicles. And so this location meets that, as Tom said. They were supportive of it because it meets the, and that's a national ASHTO standard, not necessarily, I mean, the county adopts it as a federal standard. This is what is the site distance needed based on the speed limit. And so that has been satisfied, as well as then the concession that, and to answer the questions, yeah, it's five lots. The note specifically refers to the number of lots off of the connection to South 68th Street. That five lots can be done prior to the improvements, and then the turn lanes will be installed. And then I anticipate that the county engineer's office will try to consolidate accesses on the western side of the street, because there are several driveways that take access. So the process of making this a consolidated access point will actually increase the safety because it's likely to get rid of some of those independent driveway accesses. And so, yeah, this is the point where I say, I guess as commission, you need to accept the professionals that review our work and grant their opinions and conditions, and they've signed off on everything from a design perspective with this access point, and we have agreed to put limitations on it until those turn lanes are in. So I think that's a very gracious compromise for the project, and be happy to answer any more questions you have.
Tom, the, Mike, sorry. The, when you, after you've done the five lots, do you have to come back to the planning commission and county board for the new additional lots?
No, so this project approves our, the 10 new lots, a total of 14 lots. It'll just be a condition noted in the CUP that if we come to Tom and try to do a plat for more than five new lots before the turn lanes are in, that they have the right to tell us no. So our density is approved, then it's basically administrative control by the planning department.
Okay, thank you.
I'm curious about the sight line. Does that also take into account crests of hills?
That's primarily what it analyzes. And so, in layman terms, they, it's 550 foot either direction, and it's an old standard that when there were more sedans than SUVs, it requires that a distance of four foot height, which is, I think this was established in like the 70s in a car, that that was your eyesight, four foot off the ground. We have to be able to see the same four foot, you know, the four foot of a car approaching in either direction. And so, again, it's a federal, it's a federal standard, actually, and then the county just adopts that. And so, but that's how, it's specifically for the crests and the visual clearance based on the speed limit.
Thank you.
Additional questions for Mike? Thank you very much.
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second, Joy.
Shelley.
Ball.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Core.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Rodenberg.
Yes.
Reiman Yost.
Yes.
Edgerton.
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
I would move we approve special permit 16026A.
Second, Joy.
Discussion.
Yeah, this was approved three years ago in a little different configuration. I actually think this configuration is better than what they had laid out at the beginning. I understand the concerns knowing 68th Street with us being on the south side and what happens on 68th Street. It is a very busy road and does require you to pay attention when you're driving up and down that road, especially around the school. But I do think that Mike and the developer have done their due diligence with the county and roads department and sheriff and whoever else needed to be involved. So I will be voting to approve this.
I will also be supporting the motion. I agree with fellow Commissioner Dick on the items he just mentioned. Safety is and road improvements are number one, and I believe our county engineer does her due diligence in looking at where this potentially will come out on the road and where some of the drives are across from the road, and having that 550 distance is, it feels like it's been vetted from a safety standpoint. Huge good concerns, though.
I will be supporting this, but I, first off, I want to compliment you. You both did miss post. Very proud. She'd be honored to hear you guys speak on her behalf. Thank you. I remember that day very well. South 68th does need improvements, there's no doubt. I am hoping with the developer waiting to put in the rest of his lots, there's enough pressure to get it done sooner than later. So that might work as a win-win. So I will be approving, voting to approve. There we go. This application.
Anyone else want to speak?
I just want to say thank you for speaking today, and you did a very nice job, and thank you.
Yeah. It's very important to have our community weigh in and provide that all-important perspective from the neighborhood. Safety is of paramount importance, and we really appreciate the testimony of folks who are experiencing that road and know the ins and outs of it every single day. I, too, believe that it has been appropriately vetted, as Commissioner Joy stated, and I will be voting to approve this. Shelley.
Ball.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Core.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Rodenberg.
Yes.
Reiman Yost.
Yes.
Edgerton.
Yes.
Approved eight to zero.
Oh, I ripped off my page, that's why. At this point, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so. Seeing none, I will take a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
David Carey, 555 South 10th Street. So we have opened, we have a hearing open for the item that was delayed two weeks because today is the beginning of that hearing. We did delay it. It's effectively continuing the hearing until August 9th. So if there are people here willing to or want to still testify.
I thought I asked that question and didn't. Okay.
So I think we just need to make sure we're asking that again, because we heard the other ones that were pulled off of consent first, and so now we have to ask if there's testifiers for that item today. And let's just be clear that if they do testify today, that they wouldn't be able to testify in two weeks.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, I apologize for that. I was under the impression that we did not have additional testimony, testifiers for that. That means that, Shelley, I think you need to read into the record 4.1.
Okay, 4.1, Street and Alley Vacation 23005 to vacate a portion of South First Street right away between Pioneer's Boulevard and Old Cheney Road, adjacent to property generally located at South First Street and Pioneer's Boulevard.
There are no, we are actually hearing, the public hearing part, portion of this will be at the next public hearing, but if there are those who wish to testify today, you are welcome to do so. Come on up.
But would not be able to testify in two weeks.
That's correct.
What's that?
If you testify today, you are, you're not able to testify in two weeks.
Fine, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm Bill Beamer, B-E-H-M-E-R, and I live at 5620 Hunts Drive. And I'm a board member of the Salt Valley View Neighborhood Association. And so we just have some concern, and I have no thing either for or against closing South First Street. We just kind of want to know what's going on. I wish I had a map or a better thing. Maybe I have to call the Manzito Brothers and find out what they're really doing with that area. But they're going to close half of South First Street. And I guess I have a couple of questions. You got 500 and some housing units in that place, and the way it's currently planned is there are going to be one exit onto the Pioneer's where they're going to put a roundabout, and then one exit onto what's left of South First Street. So you got 500 and some units with two exits, and I don't know if that's over the limit or something. There's some other neighborhoods in town where you have several hundred housing units but only two exits. I'm just curious about that.
Sure.
First Street right now is a gravel road, and so if you have, and I'm just going to say if you got 500 and some housing units, that's five, six, 700 cars. And at morning rush hour and evening rush, you're going to have a lot of people coming. Half of them are going to go one way, half the other way. What's the plans to pave the other half of South First Street? Wouldn't that be a good idea? The church out there, there's a community church that has a little interest in that. They've been interested in paving that road for years. But if so, I don't know who'd pay for that, because the housing development fronts part of that, and the church fronts part, but the rest of it is Wilderness Park. So I don't know who pays for that. So, is this true? The Old Cheney and Highway 77 intersection? The highway department at some point, I guess, because it's a freeway or whatever, they're talking about closing that intersection? I've seen that in the things, and it's like, that would mean folks would have to take Warlick Boulevard, which is fine, that's, you know, that's, they can only have so many stoplights on a freeway section. So that just means that folks that come out that way have to go down Old Cheney Road, which, fine. If they close that intersection, that means we get less traffic through our end. And then I was in a meeting four, five years ago, and Pam Dingman, the county engineer lady, said that eventually that Salt Creek Bridge, the Nuremberg Bridge over Salt Creek, is reaching the end of its lifespan, at which point it can join half the bridges in the county, but she said, you know, and if that bridge closes, we won't replace it. And maybe, you know, if they close the Highway 77 Old Cheney thing, there won't be any semis going down it. Maybe that bridge will last a lot, lot longer. But anyway, I just have some little, you people may not be able to answer that. Maybe I need to talk to somebody in the traffic control people or something.
We are not able to answer that. What we can do is make sure that your questions are answered, or are asked at the public hearing in two weeks. So I think we've all made notes of your questions and can make sure that those are asked. We would also invite you to reach out to the developer and gain that information for yourself as well.
Okay.
And/or the staff planner.
Yeah.
What's that?
Or the staff person who's working on this.
The planning department.
Ben Callahan.
Ben Callahan is the person who you would talk to in the, Ben Callahan? He's the planner that's.
If you look at the agenda outside the office, his phone number's listed right underneath there.
I'll pick one up.
Awesome. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, but we have, but we have made notes of your questions, and we will make sure that that's part of the discussion.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, of course. Additional testimony on 4.1, Street and Alley Vacation 23005.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Adam Hints, 1919 Prospect, representing Friends of Wilderness Park. First, we'd like to thank you all for doing what you guys do. I've been watching you now for about a year and a half, and you, you, you kind of work through so many different things in this community, and such a breadth of knowledge that you need to decipher and just kind of figure out to make the right choice. And so it's, I know it's a hard job, and I just want to express my appreciation for what you guys do every week. I know it's not every two weeks, it's like a life. So thank you so much. Ben Callahan did meet with us Thursday, and we talked about vacation and what that means. He did mention that vacating the street, so it moved to the west, would provide some light pollution blocking into Wilderness Park, and that's one of our biggest concerns with this project is light pollution. Still, if, we still don't support the vacation because we would rather just keep it a county road and unlit and just the way it is. One of the big crux of this whole argument was really creating a buffer between Wilderness Park and Wilderness Crossing. And so we were hoping that maybe if the vacation was not allowed, then that road itself would be a good buffer. Just a few more points. Thanks to Commissioner Cruz and Rodenberg for voting against the PUD last year. I know that one thing that we were really hoping for was to kind of delay the vote so we could get more information, work with the developer, and kind of find a middle ground. And unfortunately, that wasn't, that didn't happen, and there's just so much drama that's happened because of that, including six people getting arrested. So one of the things that made us also concerned was the water quality stuff. And we got three inches of rain early July, and the southern detention pond on the site overflowed, and it started bringing sediment into Salt Creek. And I actually have a photo of that. The reason why it overflowed is because there wasn't a mechanism that actually would allow that detention area to drain, which is this here temporary riser structure. And so because of that, it overflowed, and all this sediment came into Salt Creek. In this photo here, you can see how the tributary is contributing. You can see that line of more light-colored water. So that's all that sandstone from the site coming in. I know Watershed right away addressed that issue, and they're working with the developer, but it's really a little too, little too late when it comes to things on that site affecting Wilderness Park and our watershed. You know, and this was one reason that we were against such a large development near Wilderness Park, and it's shocking, you know, we took the developer's word, you know, they said that they knew how much responsibility was needed to build next to Wilderness Park, and something like this kind of makes us a little frazzled. But thankfully, you know, Watershed, they only have a certain amount of tools that they can do in terms of enforcement, and it's not very much. And so I think going forward, looking into better enforcement, maybe getting a bigger hammer would be a better step forward to keep this kind of things from happening. This person here, I think, had 40 years of experience, and they still didn't do this the right way. So, but thankfully, there's things that are coming down the pipe that are really hopeful in terms of community engagement, and specifically the civic engagement training program through Harvard. There are five city employees that went to this last month, and hopefully, all those things that we learned through the Wilderness Crossing and this conversation will be resolved in the front end. So by the time we get to you guys, the community understands what's going on, there's less pressure on you guys to have to make a decision on the dais, and then by the time it gets to city council, it's all good. So, anyway, thank you again for your time. I appreciate you all.
Does anyone have any questions for? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Additional testimony for Street and Alley Vacation 23005.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Kirsten Heiburger, 7201 Candle Tree Lane. I want to echo Adam's thanks. I know that the job that you have before you each and every week is not an easy job, and you're balancing a lot of different interests. So thank you for the work that you do. While I appreciate the extra time that was granted by the extension today on this hearing, I do share Mr. Winston's concerns about the date that was chosen. August 9th is also the first day of the Indigenous Peoples Summit that's happening in Omaha, Nebraska, and I'll be there, which is why I chose to go ahead and speak today. So that extra time does allow more communication between the local stakeholders and the planning commission. I feel that's a plus because it'll. I feel that's a plus because it allows the government to better stand with the community as co-participants in this process, rather than the government against the residents of Lincoln moving forward. So I do hope that we can use that time as a gift, even though it might not work out for some people. Thank you for also accepting written testimony for those that can't be here. There's been a lot of conflict for over a year since last August, when some members of this commission did decide to rush ahead and vote to approve the Wilderness Crossing, and then denied the community its due process by trying to prevent the Indian Center and Niskiithe Prayer Camp their appeal. Even after a judge dismissed the city's frivolous lawsuit, that decision disregarded environmental concerns by waiving required environmental impact studies, as well as the religious rights of an entire group of our community. A community that I will respectfully remind you was on this very land for tens of thousands of years before European settlers arrived. And while it may be true that Wilderness Crossing does meet some of the goals of the 2050 Comprehensive Plan, like Goal Number One, Housing, Goal Number 15, Transportation, it completely disregards Goal Number Five, Equity and Inclusion, Goal Number Seven, Environmental Sustainability and Stewardship, and Goal Number Nine, Civic Participation. And I'm going to focus my testimony on Goal Number Nine today. The Indigenous community has a right to worship, and they have made multiple attempts over the past year to engage with city leaders and peacefully discuss a path forward. The city responded not only with a lawsuit to block the appeal I mentioned earlier, but also escalated the situation by filing individual lawsuits with members of this community that are leaders in the Indigenous community, and those lawsuits are still pending and happening as we speak today. This alone is in direct opposition to Goal Number Nine of the Comprehensive Plan, which says, "Lincoln and Lancaster County recognize the need for an equitable civic process and community buy-in during the planning and decision-making process. The city of Lincoln and Lancaster County have long encouraged the public to participate in local government activities. Keeping people knowledgeable and involved in implementation of the Comprehensive Plan and other community initiatives is crucial for ensuring their ultimate success. It is important to give all members of the community a voice and the capacity to influence decisions. A key element to allowing everyone to have a voice in the civic participation process is removing barriers that prevent some members of the community from being fully engaged. Common barriers include a lack of trust. There are some residents that have a general lack of trust with government processes. This lack of trust exists for a variety of reasons, but it is something that impedes collecting the full spectrum of input from the community," end quote. Some members of this commission are directly responsible for increasing that lack of trust for many, many citizens, and myself included. The mistrust that we have with government processes. And you have before you right now an opportunity to pause, to listen to the religious and environmental concerns of residents, and to choose a path that honors those concerns and seeks to repair this broken trust relationship. Members of the Niskiithe Prayer Camp have made their concerns clear. Vacating First Street will deny our Indigenous relations their right to worship in their traditional ways in their house of worship. To quote a member of Niskiithe Prayer Camp, "The quiet of this place, the serenity of this place are so essential to our Inepi. If there are cars barreling every few seconds, it's not going to be the same. If there are people, 2,000 people, right outside the door of the Inepi, it really is going to strip us of our ability to reconnect in a meaningful way, in a profound way, to our Creator and to nature," end quote. I understand that words like sweat lodge and Inepi may not carry meaning to the members of this committee, and I would encourage you to substitute the word "church" for sweat lodge, and religious ceremonies for Inepi in your mind. Right now, in this moment, there is a beautiful opportunity for this commission, the link, to show us by the example of your actions that you value all community members and that you're willing to push back against the appeal of money and power, to stand up for disenfranchised members of your community that are merely continuing to fight their erasure from Lincoln and Lancaster County. I challenge you all to dig deep, to examine your own hearts and minds, to question your motives and what you want to stand for and how you want to be remembered. Then, there's an Indigenous tradition that they have a responsibility to think seven generations ahead with their decisions, and I would encourage all of us to adopt that thinking and think beyond just our immediate selves and family members, and consider seven generations of Lincoln children and how this decision will impact them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I don't want to testify today, I want to reserve my testimony, but I would like to make a formal request. My name's Ken Winston, and I'm appearing on behalf of Kathleen Danker, who's the owner of property located immediately across the street from this proposed development. And, but I would like to request, to make a formal request, that the hearing be continued until the 23rd. And so, that, that's what I'd like to do at this time. And I also have testimony on behalf of the ACLU that I'm submitting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there additional testimony on, on Street and Alley Vacation 23005? Okay, Commissioners, I mean, we've had a, a community member who's approached us about the change, you know, about the-
Defer.
The deferral that we did for two weeks. Do we want to have additional conversation about that?
There's no reason that the applicant could not review their request and see if the applicant then puts forward another two-week delay. But up to us, because somebody can't be here on that specific day, we have plenty of ample ways for them to communicate to us. And so, I think we can't do much except pass, which we did, that the, what the applicant requested for a delay.
Oh, go ahead.
So, can we move to defer an additional two weeks, or do we need to wait until August 9th to do that deferral? What's the policy?
I think we can make a motion.
I think we need legal or someone to tell us.
Yeah.
I want to make sure I don't speak out of line.
Yeah, the, the hard part that I have with the whole thing is the people that we have given the opportunity to speak in the past has a major conference that day, and that feels weird and not good. So let's see what our options are.
David Carey, Director of the Planning Department. So, you do have the purview to make a motion to delay further. I mean, that, and it's up to you to, to get the requisite majority vote on that. I guess I just, for the record, state that the applicant has requested the two-week delay that you've already approved to go to August 9th. I guess I'll just leave it at, it's up to you at this point. You have received testimony today that asked for that, that type of a, a further delay. You certainly could also do that in two weeks as well. So I, I am going to leave it up to you. It's, it's your purview, and it's, you have that right to do that. I don't believe the, the applicant is saying they are okay with that at this time. They are, they were okay with the two-week delay because there were some certain technical things that needed to be worked out that we still believe will be worked out in two weeks, so.
Can, so, is the applicant still in the room? Can we talk, can we request that the applicant come up, and can we talk to them right now?
I don't think the applicant's here.
Well, I think a representative from the applicant is here, but I don't, I don't, I don't know if that's what we want to do today simply because we've moved the test, the hearing to two weeks from now.
I mean, it's already delayed two weeks.
So I just wanted to ask the applicant if they would be amenable to another, to a four-week delay instead of two weeks.
I think the best thing for, maybe if that's the, the question that's at hand, I think that, that question could be asked by staff of the applicant after the hearing today and see if there is a way to do that, but I don't, I don't know what the answer is to that, if that question is asked.
I move to delay the hearing an additional two weeks to August 23rd.
Second.
Out of respect for that conference, and I think seconded.
It was wrong.
Oh, right, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Additional discussion?
I would, I can support this, I have no problem supporting this, but I, I would rather get, let staff talk to applicant and, and see if they will extend it to the, are willing to extend it to the 23rd. And, and then if they don't want to extend it to the 23rd, then I think your motion is even more appropriate. So, I'd rather that at this point in time, we ask the staff to get in, in touch with the applicant and have discussions as to whether to delay it to the 23rd.
Go ahead.
I-
So, I move to, to do that now because I know how much time and planning it takes to come to testify, and the more notice we can give those people that it is being deferred, the better off it is. I don't think the applicant in any way, shape, or form tried to specifically plan this on a date there was a national conference. It just landed that way, and the optics on that looks bad. There's no way around that. So, when we're trying to reach out to community to include them, I think it's just a better to be done, and we know it's going to be the 23rd. People can prepare for that day. If they need to adjust work schedules, it's easier to do. Coming from working-class neighborhood, I understand the struggle to get people here to testify. And then you get here, and it's deferred.
I, I agree with Gloria, I'd rather give more notice than less notice to the community members, and that's kind of why I would rather settle it right now instead of waiting for staff to reach out and respond and back and forth.
I, I agree. I think, I think we got the request for deferral last night or this morning, and by that time, as Gloria mentioned, people have, and some people may even have chosen not to go to Omaha to testify, and then just find out that morning that it's been deferred again. I'd like to defer it another two weeks.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Shelley, will you call the vote?
Ball.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Core.
Yes.
Cruz. Oh, sorry. Edens.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Rodenberg.
Yes.
Reiman Yost.
Yes.
Edgerton.
Yes.
Motion approved to defer to August 23rd.
Okay. At this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so. Seeing none, I will take a motion for deferral, or adjournment.
For adjournment.
Sorry!
I move to adjourn.
Second, Edens.
Shelley.
Ball.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Core.
Yes.
Cruz.
Edens. Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Rodenberg.
Yes.
Reiman Yost.
Yes.
Edgerton.
Yes.
We are adjourned.